Just go ahead and continue the, start the meeting. I know we have Ms. Josephine here. You see, I said Ms. Josephine because her last name, I don't want to mess it up. Selva Kumar.
You got it right.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful.
Good evening.
So, welcome. I welcome you here and I just want to open up with your presentation. So, go ahead and take it away.
Thank you so much, Mayor Gant. Good evening, everyone. Today, I have the planning staff joining me today. Let me give a quick introduction before I share my screen. I have a division chief, Tony Felt.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Nice to be here with you.
Thank you, Tony. I have my project facilitator, Sarah Benton.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you, Sarah. And today, I have the deputy project manager, Arnold Ruiz.
Good evening.
Thanks, Arnold. Give me a minute. I'll share my screen.
Thank you, Ms. Josephine, for changing the picture on our welcome.
Wait one second. Okay, can you see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Thank you. Let me... Okay, just trying to adjust it. All right. So, good evening, everyone. This is Josephine Selva Kumar from Department of Planning, Prince George County. I'm at the Community Planning Section and I'm the project manager for Port Town Sector Plan and SMA update. I see some of the names who attended a couple of weeks ago, the Bladensburg Quarterly Meeting. We did the same briefing. The Port Towns is scheduled for an update and the Department of Planning is leading their effort. We are in the very initial stage, but we want to come out to the communities and let you know where we are and engage you in the process. So, the state law requires the regional district to be divided into planning areas and we currently have forty-three planning areas and the planning areas are aggregated into seven subregions. The subregions do not have to necessarily reflect the council district. Port Town is within the planning areas sixty-eight and sixty-nine and it is in the council district five. To give you a brief overview on what is a sector plan, it is a public policy document developed with input from the community, stakeholders, elected officials, and other interested parties to create a long-term vision for a specific area of the Prince George County. And the sector plan contains counties' policies for growth and preservation for a specific targeted area, as well as strategies that, if implemented, could achieve the plan's vision over the next twenty to twenty-five years, as well as advance the goal of the plan 2035. What is sectional map amendment, SMA? This is also, this allows, SMA allows for changes to a section of the overall county zoning map in order to bring the zoning of the properties in conformance with the approved county plans and policies. By definition, it is comprehensive rezoning of one or more properties pursuant to and intended to implement the recommendations of an area master plan or sector plan. And the SMA may be prepared and reviewed after or as most commonly occurs concurrently with the area master plan or the sector plan. And in our case, it will be done simultaneously with the Port Town Sector Plan.
So, Ms. Josephine, a quick question on that zoning issue.
Sure.
If, as we go through the sector plan update and the mayor and council have areas of the community that they think maybe should be a different zone, is that when that would be discussed in the sector plan?
So, we do have a new zoning now, which is effective from April first, 2022, which I'm sure you're all aware of. And with this SMA process, one of the main goals is to reevaluate the area to see how the new zoning fits and to see, to evaluate the area with the new zoning. So, that is part of this process. Sarah, please feel free to jump in if I'm missing anything.
Yeah, no, that's right. And, you know, through the outreach process and engaging with the municipalities and, you know, working on what kind of recommendations will be made in the plan, you know, the team could find that there's different land use recommendations on different properties throughout the different municipalities and that would then require through the SMA, it might require a rezoning of a property. And so, as Josephine mentioned, the part of the process is looking at the new zoning that was implemented recently and evaluating that as part of the research and in talking with residents and municipalities, so.
Okay, one of the, I'll just give you, share with you our economic development strategic plan that's being finished up and will be available through you all in a month or so. One of the things it talks about in there is the car businesses that is, that are injunction, excuse me, in Buchanan Street and Ingraham and Forty-sixth Avenue in Edmiston and how the council can go about potentially not having so many of those businesses. So, that's, that's the reason I asked that question.
Thank you. And that's, that leads into the goal slide which I have here. So, as I mentioned earlier, one of our main goals is to look into the new zoning and how, and the market conditions and how the existing, to reevaluate the area and to see how the existing conditions would fit with the new zoning. And as you all know, we have four municipalities and we are looking to engage all the municipalities and get your community participation throughout the process. And in this process, we are also looking to define the neighborhood center. And as you could see, I also have a boundary map which is still being defined. And this is our starting point now, which is from the 2009 sector plan. Here is a graphic showing you the overview of the plan process. And the, and we are anticipating that the initiation and the kickoff would be sometime in fall this year, but official dates are yet to be determined. Our plan generally takes two to three years depending upon the scope, on the complexity and is subject to timeframe depend, determined by the zoning ordinance. And we are, as I mentioned before, we are in the very early stage doing our background and research and we are in the pre-planning stage of the planning process. As I introduced in the beginning of the presentation, Sarah Benton is the project facilitator. I'm the project manager and Arnold Ruiz is the deputy project manager. And I have our contact information here. And as we dive into the process, we would be having our community engagement and we would, we are looking forward to work with all four municipalities and engage you all and gather, gather input from you all. So, if any questions, we are here to answer and I have our contact information here for you to follow up with any questions you might have.
Ms. Josephine, you asked today about the status of the Port Town CDC.
Yes.
And I wanted to just let you know that it has been inactive for several years. It's, it's going through, I believe, a rebirth potentially as the last Port Towns Quarterly Meeting, not the one that was hosted here recently by Bladensburg, but the one prior to that last quarter of last year. A group of people got to, are on to that virtual meeting and they talked about how they could get it going again and get it active. But at this particular point in time, it is not particularly active.
Okay, okay. Yeah, thanks for the email. Thanks for your response. I was just curious to know because I did see it was in the renewal application and we did hear in our studies and research, so I just wanted to make sure and confirm with you. So.
Yeah, hopefully it'll be reactivated potentially and, and, you know, working and being a part of this process along the way.
So, that's all I got for today. I will stop sharing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We continue conversation.
Thank you.
All righty. Take care. Mr. Barnes?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you continue on with the agenda for me, please?
Oh, okay. Next item to review, and Sarah is on the meeting, I believe she's just off-screen. I just saw a message pop up. Is the minutes, was there any questions involving the work session minutes from the eleventh, the closed session minutes and the regular session meeting minutes? Nobody has any questions? The next item to be reviewed or considered on the agendas tonight was the reintroduction again of the ordinance dealing with property maintenance and specifically addressing the peeling, chipping and of paint. I provided earlier this week a memo that our community compliance officer checked with other communities to see what their standard was. I provided that information to you along with the county, Prince George's County's requirement on having that in their code and then would answer any questions that anyone might have. It was apparent from other communities and from the county that this is a common requirement of, from a health and safety standpoint and from an aesthetic standpoint. No questions on that? Okay, next item.
All right. Can I ask a quick question? Sorry, this is Hillary. I was trying to like.
Yes.
So, you sent around these kind of sample, like examples of what other municipalities have. And so, is our next step to figure out which of those we like the best or we think is the best fit for our community and then, like, what's the next step? Like, now that we have these multiple examples?
We proposed our, our next step at the last meeting, which was the ordinance. And that's what we're proposing again with the language that is spelled out that is almost exact as some of the samples that was provided to you. What I believed or I thought you'd ask us with was to find out what other communities were doing and how they were dealing with the issue and that's what, that's what we did.
So, then are we proposing the same lang, we're not modifying the language based on, like Chevrolet's example? We're sticking with what we have? I guess that's what I'm not clear on.
Yes, no, that's correct. You're, you're, you're clear. We are sticking with what and proposing what the ordinance was presented at that last meeting.
Oh, I was steady talking. Ms. Hillary, did you have a question or concern about what was proposed before we move further?
Well, I, I guess I was just thinking about the discussion we had last month and that it seemed that there wasn't, there wasn't a clear link between our concern with things like surface treatments of people's residences tied to these like health and safety concerns. And, and so, I think that was, from my perspective, that was a bit of the concern that it was, you know, a bit more about like, you know, we don't want something discolored. We don't want something scaled. And, and I think my point was if there were, if there was a way to sort of tie what we're concerned about to health, safety, that would make more sense to me and that would seem more like the kind of thing that we, sort of as a municipality, should be concerned about and less about, to some degree, the aesthetics. And so, then we got these samples and there are samples, the Chevrolet sample, even the one, I think, the Cottage City one where they are making a bit more of an explicit connection about we care about the exterior surface because we want things to be preserved and protected from the elements and decay and it's, it's less about the aesthetics of something being discolored or scaling, I guess, if that makes sense. And so, I guess I would.
Yes, so it does make sense. The whole property maintenance section of our code begins with that very statement that the, the section is pursuant to the International Property Maintenance Code and that it is there so as to not to pose a threat to the public health, safety, or welfare. And it, it says, specifically, it says, "All buildings and structures shall be maintained in good repair, structurally and sanitary pursuant to the portions of the Property Maintenance Code adopted herein and then pose no threat to the public health, safety, or welfare." So, the section that we're adding this into the language to clarify already has that language that's included in Chevrolet and other communities.
Ms. Hillary, was there anything else or are you look, you're looking?
Well, I guess I'm, maybe I'm still not a hundred percent clear. So, we're not changing what we have in our proposed ordinance language. Is that correct?
We are adding, we're adding the clarification of what the exterior paint, what that means when it says exterior paint must be maintained to standard. And so, in order for the community compliance officer to have a better, better way to explain to homeowners, we added the language of the peeling, cracking.
Yeah.
Paint. And as I indicated last time, this would rarely be an instance where she would even use at the point, at this point in time, I can, driving through town, I can probably find maybe one or two homes that would even fit the criteria.
And Ms. Hillary, Hillary, one thing I found is, and I know you know too, but especially with our ordinances, sometimes if you don't have it in there, sometimes you need it in there when you need it. So, it needs to be written. The county is good for that. We have a lot of unclear things, a lot of things that kind of hang. And so, we really needed to be descriptive because we did have an example of a home that needed some attention. So, we have to have it in there for when we do need it. And just like Rod said, we have very few. I can only see two, maybe three that might need that attention. But I think the wording is good, but if you feel that we should reword or have a suggestion before we move further, please, your expertise is invited.
I looked up mayor and Councilmember Chester in our ordinance, so I have it, our code. I have it right in front of me. And so, under administration, at the beginning of property maintenance, where this section is, the purpose of this section is, "The purpose of this code is to protect the public health, safety, and welfare and occupied buildings are structured, used for dwelling purposes for commercial or industrial workspace as herein as provided by." And so, then it goes through all of the wonderful things, basements and what has to happen, all the great things that has. So, this is just simply amending the part that talks about the painting of exterior sides of the home. Standards is where it falls under.
Okay. I'm not sure why I'm still confused. So, so this evening, after going through and looking at other examples where there are, I don't know, examples where it's just, there's a more immediate connection between exterior surfaces and weather resistance and being impervious to adverse effects of weather, blah, 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 that we're not, we're not making that clarification, that direct reference that, that we are not making that change, that we're leaving it as initially proposed where at the beginning of that section, there's reference to health, safety, but we're not changing what, what was proposed last month. Is that right?
Well, we're not changing to add any additional descriptions about health and safety because health and safety covers everything that we do under property maintenance. So, we only take action against a property owner on a home, whether it's about rubbish, whether it's about tall grass, whether it's about tires, whether it's about stuff on the porch, it's a bad fence, it's a dead tree. All of those things fall under property maintenance, all under the category of health and safety. Same way with the painting of the home. And so, all we're asking for is a stricter interpretation of when you're saying that the home must be painted. Well, what does that mean? And so, I believe at the last meeting, you didn't want it, nobody wanted it to be about aesthetics. You wanted it to be about health and safety and that's exactly what we're doing. Chipping paint, you don't want from a health and safety standpoint because it's, it's got lead base and it's going to contaminate the soil or contaminate people that are around it and inhaling it. You don't want open wood because it's going to deteriorate and rot and then create a health and safety sanitary issue with mold. So, all of those things are things that we do. And so, giving the clarification that chipping, peeling, paint can't be part of it because we already says, say that the exterior has to be covered, then we've just defined it a little better for the community compliance officer to work with the resident to make sure that they're meeting those health and safety standards. I, I don't, I mean, I'm happy, Councilmember Chester, if there's some different language you want or additional language that you want in the section. You know, this, this doesn't have to obviously be approved tonight on first reading. It's going to go through, you know, this is the introduction. It won't be considered on final until March. And so, there's opportune time to change it any way that you would propose. If, if the Chevrolet ordinance is spelled out better, but you can't, you got to look at the Chevrolet ordinance for property maintenance. You can't just necessarily look at that one little section. That's the only section that's dealing with paint on the exterior walls. But I'm happy to do that and happy to bring it back with some additional language for next week, or next month.
I guess that's what I thought. I thought that was the point of looking at municipalities' language was to see if there's a way to craft that one or two sentences so that there's a much more clear, what we care about is, is conditions that could impact people's health, safety, overall, you know, the, the weatherization and just, you know, buildings being structurally sound and less about an open-ended where someone could come along and like, well, that looks discolored or that's, you know, kind of peeling and it could get more nitpicky. And so, making that connection really clear and explicit. I, I think.
Okay, I, I got it. We're at an impasse. We're at, we're at an impasse because we're saying the exact same thing. So, what will happen is I will sit down with you and we will go through the code that we have and the language that it says about health and safety and then what language needs to be improved for the painting so that it's very clear that somebody can't abuse that power.
Okay.
I missed, I misunderstood what you wanted. I thought you wanted to know if other towns did, did the same thing and they do. And so, that's, that's what I was trying to prove and show by contacting the other towns. I wasn't necessarily trying to get the language from the other towns to go into ours because we already had proposed the language that was appropriate according to legal. So, I'm happy to sit down and do that with you.
Okay. Sorry. I don't want to make this really complicated. I just, I think it's, I think it's an easy remedy.
No, I don't, I don't think it is. I think it, we already have the remedy there and I just don't think you're seeing it. So, I think that we just need to sit down and go through it line by line so that you feel comfortable that we do have it there.
Okay.
And the next item is, if there's no, is there any other questions or comments on that one? Okay, next one is the driveways. All right. And this one is on final approval for specifying the type of materials to be allowed for driveways. Was there any questions, concerns with that particular ordinance? Okay, next one is the introduction of an ordinance that's cleaning up a problem that we discovered. It actually, Avery, the town clerk, discovered when she was setting up for the elections this year. Two years ago or so, we did a comprehensive update of the election ordinances and the charter. And somehow or other, as we were doing that, we missed one section in the code that in the old days, way back when, there was supplemental registration books that were kept by the town clerk at town hall. That was done away with a number of elections way back. And so, unfortunately, when we were updating the ordinance, we didn't get that section deleted. So, this ordinance would clean that up and make sure that that is the case. All voter election registration, voter registration is handled by the Board of County Elections through all their various means and avenues that they have for that to happen. Is there any questions, concerns about that? Okay, next item is Chief Beal is ready to dispose of a 2015 Ford Explorer Police Cruiser as surplus and authorize it for sale on our govdeals.com process that allows for bids to be obtained and the highest bidder receiving the wonderful used X Police Cruiser. It's, he's not replacing it at this time with anything new. It's just getting rid of one that's been sitting out in the lot since we bought the last two vehicles in the last year and a half.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I know that we are not like fully staffed for all of our officers. Like, so if we were, would this mean that we would need to purchase another vehicle in order for everyone to?
No, no, this is one we've just got, is. No, no, this is one we've just got, is designated as surplus that we should have actually had as surplus back when we bought the last cruiser last year. And we just didn't, uh, we kept it on hand and they didn't get it stripped out and get it ready to go. And so now it's in the process of being available to do that.
Yeah. So every officer wants, uh, hopefully when we get fully staffed, they'll have their own cruiser. We will only have one spare, which would be the domestic violence car.
Okay. And that's, and that's sufficient is to have the one spare. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yeah, that's actually been our practice always to just have one, one spare so that they can use when their cars, one of their cars go down or down. Good question. Thanks. Um, next one is the renewal of our contract with our mowing and landscaping contractor, professional lawn maintenance services. Um, they are an amazing company that does wonderful things for us and ends up lots of times doing things for us for free, but um, they maintain all of our rain gardens. And as you well know, we're up to thirty rain gardens. And we'll be soon at forty rain gardens. And then after that, we'll be almost to fifty by the time we complete the Hamilton Street Project. They do our mowing in down Decatur. They do the right-of-way mowing on Taylor, the parks, uh, Veterans Park. And they do along, um, Kennelworth Avenue. Next item is the mosquito spray. Um, the state has reached out to us again. They went up a little bit. Price used to be eight hundred dollars a season. Now it's thirteen hundred dollars a season. I guess that's the inflation, uh, but they would spray once a week, beginning May thirty first through September twenty seventh. They typically spray on Tuesday nights after dark, well into the evening. We tried to give notice and let people know that that, that is occurring. There's, if it's inclement, whether they do not spray. Is there any concerns, questions? Okay. Next item is a request from End Time Harvest Ministries for twenty-five thousand dollars of the ARPA funds. Um, Councilmember Turberville sent out a note today asking about whether ARPA funds could be used for nonprofits and it can be. Is a process that, um, they included when they did the funding. So, um, this is our, um, a request from one of our partners, nonprofit partners, and um, she had asked for this some time back and I put this on the agenda so you guys could not necessarily to approve it at this amount, but to certainly allow for you all to have some discussion about whether you wanted to use the ARPA funds for that purpose and for her organization in particular.
Um, if I could clarify what my concern was a little bit, Rod?
Yes.
Um, it wasn't that I, I was concerned about whether or not nonprofits could access the ARPA funds. I just wanted to make sure that we had an open and transparent process about organizations seeking to use the funds for that purpose. You know, I thought that with some of the plans that we had made and thought about for some time for use of the funds that, you know, we were starting to draw down on it pretty quickly. But that aside, if we are, if this is open for nonprofit organizations to be able to apply for grants from us, I think it's really important for us to have some kind of public process that, you know, where people know, organizations within Edmiston know that these funds are available to them. Otherwise, I think we open ourselves up to, you know, sort of looking like we're playing sides and there's, you know, certain organizations that have relationships with the council or the mayor and therefore get special treatment. Um, and there could be other nonprofits in town that would also like to have access to the ARPA fund. So I'm not suggesting it needs to be like a laborious process of some kind for them to go through the application, but I think that it would be a little CYA for us to just make sure that we've got something that's open and transparent.
Thank you, Mr. Turberville. Um, I do agree with you. And I believe, um, after Mr. Barnes and I, we did discuss it. I think we have maybe three or four other nonprofits or two or three nonprofits within the community. So, um, just figuring out a process, a, um, not low-grade um, process, but a, uh, not as extensive as we did with our grant program. But something like that would be great. One of the things I know that I had mentioned to you is that, um, uh, End Time Harvest does cater to the community and it's, um, about our youth. So we have to consider that as well, but I do understand that, um, we want a fair process. So, um, I'm in agreement with you on that. And maybe we can, um, get a, uh, kind of low-scale kind of, um, opportunity for nonprofits. Go ahead, Mr. Barnes.
Um, just that, you know, we do only have approximately three nonprofits in, in located in town. I'm sure they all would be interested in obtaining funding, but one of the first things you, you, at this point in time, you've somewhat allocated your ARPA funds or at least designated what you want to use those funds for. And then, uh, the other question would be how much of the ARPA funds do you want to set aside for the nonprofit organizations? And then, like I said, the criteria, do they have to be operating in Edmiston and providing services to Edmiston residents?
Right. That's what I said. We could probably try to kind of figure out because, um, Reverend Gale does, uh, End Time Harvest does not, um, operate in Edmiston, even though they cater to our students. So, um, I know that she did seek funding from another or two communities. And because she's not an operating business in, within their community, they did not provide her with the funding. I don't think that that's what we want to do. And we, like you just brought it up, we have to consider that. Uh, my thing is she does cater to our community.
Where is she? Where is the nonprofit incorporated?
New Carrollton Incorporated. That's where the business office is, yes. But she operates out of also, her business office is in New Carrollton. Um, that's where the taxes and all of that are paid for. Yeah. And, um, but she also works in Bladensburg High School.
Has she asked New Carrollton for support?
She's asked everyone. She's asked, um, Port Towns, New Carrollton. Yeah, yeah. But I don't, I don't know that that's our, our question, good question, but I don't know if that's our question, but I do know specifically that, um, she, uh, she did operate for a short time. I don't know if she's still doing it at, uh, what's that high school over there? And, um,
It's in Park. Isn't she at Park?
Who?
Isn't she at Park? Parkdale?
No, I know.
Right. Yeah, yeah. So she does, she does work in the community. I, I, I will say that. So, um, maybe we can come up with something, Mr. Barnes, and we can present it and, um, you know, go from there. Ms. Turberville, um, your input would be appreciated.
And can I just, like, we have, like, there's, there are categories of the kind of, you know, things you can spend those ARPA funds on too. And so we have to make sure that what, what she would be spending the money on either going forward or whether it's money to recoup past expenses, I'm not sure, but with, like, that has to be in alignment with the rules of the ARPA funds too, though, just to be sure that we're following those rules as well, right? The categories of things.
Any grant that we would give or provide to a sub-grantee, they have to meet all the requirements and rules of the ARPA funds.
Yeah. So we have to make sure it falls in the right category and things.
Well, I don't believe there's categories necessarily, but, um, for the nonprofits, but they're, it had, they have to meet all the rules and regulations. Yes.
Okay. Anything else with that, Ms. Turberville?
Yeah. Do y'all want to come up with a, a draft or something and share it with me? Or do you want my, to be involved at the outset? Just let me know.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Barnes, you can continue.
Oh, you can take over. The next item is, we have a water wagon.
Before we go forward.
Yes, sir.
Um, if, if they're asking for, for twenty-five thousand, why can't each, uh, port town come together and come up with that amount? And, you know, and, and come up, each, each town contribute and come up with that amount.
Good question, Mr. Bar, uh, Mr. Johnson. The thing is, um, she did not request that amount. Um, that was our amount, just to put on the table for, um, our discussion. That's all. Not to say that's how much we want to give. Um, uh, we can give less, you can give more. Um, it was just an amount to put on the table. And as far as, oh, get out of here. That's the baby? Oh, my. Good gracious. Um, she grew up fast, but, um, She doesn't miss any meals. She doesn't miss a meal. Oh, yeah. Good gracious. Um, the port towns, as I mentioned, they've already considered it and some uh, did not approve of it because of their parameters for their gifting or their, their grant. Um, one community, I believe it's Ladensburg, you had to actually have your business in that particular community. So she operates out of Ladensburg High School, but that's not the business address. So, um, I don't know that we want to be that technical with, with her in a sense, because we do know, um, we see those, I mean, we give how many certificates during, um, our appreciation time in December, um, from End Time Harvest because of the work that they do. Um, so, good though, uh, Mr. Johnson, if, if we had thought of that ahead of time, maybe we could have come up with a, a, an amount for each of us to participate or to contribute so that we can have one solid amount. You know, maybe the solid amount would have been fifty thousand. I don't know. And, um, but that's a good idea. Now, I would be willing, though, to go to the mayors and the chairperson to see if they'd like to do something like that. If you think that's a good idea, um, council, I can, um, definitely go to them with that. But then do we?
I mean,
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, something that just might make all of our lives easier is if we don't, like, if we did something like that, right? Cause and did like an annual contribution, because we've done annual contributions to them before. Um, rather than in the form of a grant through the ARPA program, right? So what if we just use like our general revenue sources for like five thousand dollars? And, and hope that the other port towns would contribute the same.
So I'm willing to have that conversation with the, um, um, mayors or the, um, town administrators and see, um, if they still contribute, uh, as we do to End Time Harvest and to see if they'd like to do something like that as well.
We do contribute annually, um, Councilmember Turberville, two thousand dollars.
All right, good. So I'll do that. I'll, I'll do that task. And then we'll also, um, look at nonprofit, um,
Grant program.
Hmm, thanks. Okay. Mr. Barnes?
Okay. Uh, next item was the, our water wagon that we don't, uh, use and haven't used for quite some time. In fact, it's, um, not functioning. And, and so our, uh, lawn maintenance company uses it from time to time. They borrow it for when they, uh, wanted it. Unfortunately, I think when it was brought back, it wasn't winterized. And so there's a problem now with the pump and some of the hoses, but we don't, our guys don't use it. They've used, um, the gym and, um, our barrels of water, our jugs of water to do the watering and our, our planters on, uh, Decatur and the other places. So proposing that the lawn folks purchase our water wagon for seven hundred dollars.
Any questions about the water wagon?
I like the name.
I know you do. Water wagon. Is that really the name, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
That you named it?
No, no, that's it.
It's called a water wagon.
It is.
All right. So we're good with that.
Okay. Next is the election board time. It is election season. And, um, so um, Avery's getting ready, uh, to support the election board. It's our ordinance says, um, the election board is what actually determines and decides all of the wonderful things dealing with our election with the assistance of the staff and, and specifically the town clerk. So, um, we have, as you all know, at the last election, ran into a problem with last minute, um, availability of judges. And so uh, we are proposing to, um, not only name three judges that will, uh, serve hopefully, but also alternate so that the, um, day of the election or the Friday before, uh, we're notified so that we can have a full election board of three people. Uh, Mr. Charles Mays is who we're proposing for the chief judge in Ward One. He lives at fifty-two oh five Forty-seventh Avenue. Meredith Massey as the judge for Ward One at fifty-two oh four Forty-seventh Avenue. And then Monique Burton, who lives at fifty-twenty Kennelworth Avenue for Ward Two. All three, three of these have previous election experience. Monique has done the town elections. Meredith and Mr. Mays has, um, done the general election, state elections, primary elections. Um, and so they're well-versed in the election process. We're also proposing, um, Ms. Ingrid Ali uh, for Ward One alternate and Ms. Audrey Pabbs Garnon, uh, for Ward Two alternate. Uh, Ms. Pabbs Garnon has done the town election before. So again, uh, she is well-versed and trained. So this would be the election board. We are working on also bringing to you, um, a judge that would be, um, bilingual so that, um, as an alternate or would be onsite uh, all day to assist any of our, um, Hispanic folks that need assistance.
I'm coming.
Any?
Oh.
Seems like a good idea.
Oh. All right. So that's, um, our election board.
Super. And just remember, um, right, uh, the deadline for registration or for filing is, uh, March thirty-first. Same with registration, our voter registration. So, um, everyone is aware of that. If, when it's out in the newsletter, it'll go out with additional information uh, later in, in the, uh, so we get closer to that timeframe. Um, we have bids for a sidewalk construction on Fifty-first Avenue Emerson, Fifty-second Avenue. We, uh, had actually done this. We were over budget, so we're trying to get this down under budget. We're gonna actually ask to reduce it a little bit further as we want to get as close to our hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant as we can get, um, on this. So, but I would ask, because we're under a tight deadline to get it completed by May first, um, to award this to a local company, which is exciting, Alcoa Concrete in the amount of a hundred and forty-two, five eighty-six with the stipulation that we reduce it to our, um, grant amount. Any questions? Okay. Um, next item is, we have a storage problem. We don't have anywhere to put anything. Um, and so we're trying to figure out solutions. And so one of our solutions Um, and so we're trying to figure out solutions. And so one of our solutions, and particularly, uh, what brought this up was our beautiful Christmas garlands. When we took them down off of the poles, um, we did not have a shed or storage area uh, that was uh, could accommodate them to put them inside. So um, we don't particularly want to keep them outside. Right now, they're laying on a parking space in the back parking lot. But um, we would propose building a ten by fifteen storage shed because we don't need a permit from the county for that size, that we're, where that's the limit. You can't go past ten by fifteen without a permit. And it would go in the very back corner of the, the lot. It would have a, be on a concrete pad. And its uh, cost is nine thousand five hundred dollars. So it would include the electrical, so we have lights in it and we would store not only the the garlands, but potentially all of our Christmas decorations and other decorations that we have kind of cobbled around in the little shed and in the, in the Public Works Building and um, anywhere else that we can find a place to, to put them. Okay. And then the last item that we added today was, uh, and Chief Beal, do you want to talk about that in terms of your grant?
Yeah, so we got the grant from Maryland State Police to extend, well, not even extend, but to replace our old um, license plate reader. They come in handy and it helps us recover stolen vehicles outside of town. It also helps our vehicles communicate with Prince George's County if they get a critical missing person or wanting vehicle. Um, because we order Kennelworth Avenue runs throughout town. Um, it's a great tool for Emerson to have to help locate either missing people or um, felony vehicles involved in a felony crime. So we currently have two older models. One is out of service and the other one, only one is working on that pair. So with this grant, we were able to upgrade it with two brand new ones. Uh, we just have to get it approved and uh, show proof of purchase before it was first, or we lose the fund money, the grant money.
Any questions on that?
Oh, I have a question.
Thank you, Ms. Turberville.
Go ahead. Are you surprised? Um, Chief Bill, do you know if um, we have a policy on use of the license plate readers?
At this moment, we do not. Um, the officer just log in and it just scans whatever tags that compare to vehicles.
Um, I would suggest that we maybe work on a, a policy for use of license plate readers. You know, similar to the policy that we have for body worn cameras and whatever else, just to make sure that the readers are being used appropriately.
Of course, of course.
And if not, we can research and develop one.
Yeah, so um, we could definitely research to see what Prince George's County has, because they're the actual um, basically the main area, uh, department that uses them. Um, so basically the officer logs in and once they log in, the cameras do all the work. Uh, we piggyback off of Prince George's County cameras as well as now we're able to communicate with PG County and MPD or Metropolitan Police. Uh, it's becoming a great tip and a great tool for us, um, especially with the rise of KFBS and death from others in the county and in the news area. So it helps us out a lot. But we can definitely research the policy to see, to see what we can uh, get started at Emerson.
Yeah, I think that's a good um, question, Ms. Turberville. Um, being that we're replacing um, two of them. So we've had them for some time. And um, we all know if we get pulled over, it's, you know, how are they going to handle us? What, what's the reason? Are they just, are you just driving down the street and deciding to run my license plate? And so on? And what's the cost for doing that kind of thing? So that's, that's pretty good. Thank you.
Yeah, I was, I was surprised to hear we didn't have a policy. And this isn't something I'm putting on your shoulders at all.
Right, right.
Um, I just think this is a place where we've got room for improvement and um.
Just because we haven't had it doesn't mean we don't need it, right? Just like I was saying, uh, with the pop, the um, um, who was the discussion we just had? Let me go back. Uh, la, 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 la. Not elections, um, for property maintenance, just like that. We haven't, um, uh, we didn't have it in there, but we need it just in case. We need it. We have to have certain policies. We have to update things, so. Thank you. Any other questions for um, Chief Beal? All right. Super. So um, right now, if the council doesn't mind, um, and if there are, aren't any more questions concerning our agenda for tonight, Mr. Barnes, go ahead.
I got one question.
You did the meeting. Okay, Mr. Johnson. Yes, sir.
Um, the, the Black History Month, uh, it says virtual. What does it consist of?
Um, is Ms. Avery?
Yes.
Hi, council. Uh, we're having a virtual um, program. It'll be focused on hair and expression of beauty. And for four to five nights, the last week of February, we'll have a segment on the history of hair care. We'll have some where we've talked to some residents and what they do about hair care and with how they feel about their hair. We're gonna also have an access to experts and we'll talk to a barber and beauticians. And um, the last, that Saturday, last Saturday of the month, we'll put it all together and have a program. That will air, I mean, air on um, YouTube be on, on our local channels.
Okay.
Okay.
Avery, can I make a, a small suggestion for this? I think this is, this is a sort of fun and unique approach. And a couple of months ago, Elliot got in the mail a book called Hair Love that was like through, you know, Dolly Parton's um, Imagination Library, where she sends books to kids all across the country for the first five years of their life. You just have to sign up for it, um, so you get a book a month. But Hair Love was one of the books. So I wonder if we might be able to get like, you know, twenty copies or something like that paperback of the book. It's really short, cute children's book that we might be able to hand out.
Cool.
That's a great idea. Yeah. Hair Love, okay. I'll look it up. We're also providing um, uh, a free hairstyle as well for a viewer or so of the series. So the participants who are barbers or beauticians will provide discounted hairstyle for viewers, for some viewers, limited amount.
Yeah. Didn't Chris Rock do um, like a documentary?
He did, and Oprah also has done um, a series about hair here lately. And there's also, we're going to focus a little bit on the um, the Crown Act, which is about hair discrimination that is passed in Maryland and number other states, but is still yet to pass nationally.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah. But thank you for that idea. I'll look up Hair Love. I think that's a great addition as a giveaway.
The author's name is Matthew Cherry.
Matthew Cherry, okay, got it.
Very good.
I'll be on Amazon.
Yeah.
You and a billion other people.
We are also looking at possibly, and we have to look at it really quick because time is moving on. But anytime you talk about food, you can do it at the last minute. Um, uh, we were talking about having a tasting of, of, you know, some soul food. Um, one of the reasons we stayed away from uh, in person, not staying away from, but um, we spend a lot of money um, putting these, these uh, events together. And sometimes the only participants are the participants, the ones that are actually in it. And so um, when we look at our Facebook um, viewings, we get more viewings uh, on Facebook and especially with our new social media, um, with um, Asha, and then we have um, Ms. Avery working with her. We're hoping to get more viewings and to be able to repeat it. You know, it's something that is, is, is filmed and we can repeat it. And um, it's also a time consideration. Uh, individuals can uh, look at different things for that last week and it doesn't take all day long. You don't have to sit for two hours to do it. So I believe we'll probably be able to go in um, person next year. Uh, but um, we just thought that maybe um, continuing with the Zoom would be a great idea as well as um, uh, having a little tasting of a little food and allowing people, you know, you can come, I don't know what day we said, Mr. Barnes, if it would be a weekend or a weekday. But just you can stop by and get your, you can take out. So we can have takeout uh, containers ready. Um, supporting a black business and um, have them scoop and they can take out. So after work, come and get it. Um, you don't have to sit around if you don't want to, but if you want to, you can. So um.
I think that. Yeah, I think, Mary, you were thinking during the week because of workday, coming by after work.
Like a Friday or something.
Like a Friday, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Is that good with the council, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cool, cool. All right.
I just had one other, yeah, just to remind you that, so we have two items when you set the agenda for tonight's meeting to remove. Item four B, the, the painting ordinance, and then the um, item four H, which is the end time harvest ministry. So those both could be removed at the beginning of the meeting. And then I just wanted to tell Councilmember Turberville that the town's little libraries are a member of Dolly Parton's program. And so we get a book a month too that goes into the little libraries.
Awesome.
Super. So um, we need to go into a quick closed session to discuss a personnel matter or personnel, yeah, personnel matter. And then um, the, we'll also come back out because um, Chief Beal has uh, two officers that he'd like to present to us tonight. So at this time, I'll accept the motion to go into a closed session and then um, return to our open session for um, a review of candidates. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Ms. McCully?
I think so.
I know, I was like, I don't know why I did that. But um, you wanna first, you gonna, a motion and second? Is there a second?
I will second the motion.
All right, Ms. Chester, thank you all. Ms. McCully made the motion. Ms. Chester, second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you.
It is V. Gordon.
Two of the council members. Hello. Sorry, I didn't know if I could unmute or not. Hi. Hello. Is it okay if I speak?
You're here for the town council meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, um, Mel, can we put you in the waiting room just for a few moments?
Yes, ma'am.
You a town resident?
No, ma'am. I'm with Congressman uh, Glenn Ivy.
Hi, how you doing?
I'm well, how are you?
Good. We just went over a little bit on our um, closed session.
I'm sorry, say it again.
We just went over in time.
Oh, okay.
Our closed session.
Yes.
Is, is Drake in, though? No, so, so.
Mary, you're, you're out of clo- Mary, you're out of closed session. You, you went out of closed session before you interviewed.
I said we went over, but she, we're interviewing, so um, she's. We didn't start our meeting yet. Ms. Gordon, is that how you pronounce your name?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So since we don't have our interviewee here, go ahead, introduce yourself and let, give us some background on what you're doing with um, Councilmember Ivy.
Sure. Um, well, so he's a congressman for the Maryland fourth.
Oh, Congress, Congressman Ivy, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Um, and so I, my name is, oh, I can for sure start my video. Oops, okay. Sorry, make sure my hair is okay. All right, oh. It's got all right.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so hello, everyone. My name is Victoria Gordon, um, spelled on my screen, I hope. And um, I do work in Congressman Glenn Ivy's district office. I am the current casework manager. Um, we're just getting started. We are a new member of office, as I'm sure you all are aware. And we are here um, and want to make sure we are here and available for you all in any way that we can be. Um, so I will drop my information in the chat if that's okay?
Yeah, please.
Okay, perfect. So I'll drop our office information and then my personal, uh, or rather my work email address. And then uh, you all have access to that. If you need anything, just shoot me an email. And if I can't help you, we'll make sure it's properly triaged.
All right. And what is your um, position there? I missed it. I, I thought I heard case manager.
Yes, ma'am, I'm casework manager.
Say that one more time.
Casework manager, so I handle.
Casework manager, okay. Very good. Well, it's a pleasure to meet you. And I'm so glad you um, took the time to come to our meeting. I know you have many, many more to attend.
Yes.
Pleasure. And you said you're gonna drop your info in our chat?
Yes, ma'am, that's all right.
To connect with you. Um, and thank you, much success to you.
Thank you so much.
Begin this time.
We really appreciate it. We're definitely gonna need all of your well wishes because it's busy. It's very busy.
Yeah, yeah. Have you, you've um, you've worked for Congress, a person before, or you were in another area?
Yes, ma'am. So I actually am, I used to work for Congressman uh, Brown, well, the current state's attorney general now. Um, so I was in his, in the same uh, district uh, for three years. And then um, now I'm casework manager in Congressman Ivy's office, but we're trying to make sure we are connected with all of our state and local, um, everyone, just all of our state and local resources and making sure they know we're here.
Wonderful, wonderful. So um, you have actually the mayor and council here. Um, Councilum, Member Chester, Councilmember Turberville, uh, Councilmember McCully and Mr. Johnson, he's on the phone. And you also have our town administrator and our police chief is here. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much for having me and I'll absolutely be listening in.
All right. We're gonna go to a quick break.
Right.
So um, don't hang up.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Drake should be in the waiting room once he come back off the break.
Okay, so I'll just wait.
All right.
Drake is in there.
It's seven twenty-one. Um, we can't break for so long. So what, five minutes, guys, or you need ten? Five is good. All right, so.
Twenty.
So we'll be back at seven twenty-five.